Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call this September Board Meeting to order. Stand and please cite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. It's been a long summer. And we are back. We're gonna get straight to it. I'm going to introduce our new ASB President Paige Squires, and she's gonna kick it off with her student update.
Yeah, hello, guys. So as you mentioned, my name is Paige Squires. I am this year's ASB President. I was here at the meeting with Ethan, so you might remember me from that. I'm just gonna go over the student updates. So starting off as usual with academics. The new grading system is all in place. Our new version of standards-based. It's been really great. My teachers have done an amazing job at detailing what it is, how it's working, how it's going to be implemented within their classroom. So I really appreciated that. We also have the new phone policy. So I've been noticing a really big improvement with how my peers are interacting with one another, how they're able to go throughout their days longer in classes, talking to each other. Group work has been a lot better, in my own opinion. For those who are seniors, college applications are officially open. So that's great. Starting to become a stressful season. I've been really enjoying my schedule so far with AP Statistics being my favorite class. I find that, as I mentioned earlier, it's a really applicable math for me. I think I'll use it a lot within my future, as well as it's just been a really great community within that classroom. We've been having a really great time. I've also noticed that flex three times a week has already been a great option with how we are able to now have more flexibility within our club meetings and the days that we have for that. There's a lot less run-in with now having Link Crew as part of my schedule. I'm able to attend that, help out with that, make sure that I'm accomplishing things in leadership, getting things done on time, and being involved in more ways. So that has also been a great improvement. I'm going to shift down into the arts. Hades Town, the fall play, has officially begun rehearsals. They're just starting to get set for their first show coming up. The Drama Two performances are also having their auditions and starting rehearsals soon. All of the 4th graders in our district will be going and watching that play. They are coming over to the high school just to have a little matinee show and see what some of our further advanced drama students have been working on and putting a lot of their effort into. Some of you may have seen this Saturday. Bands had their fundraiser Band Day. If they were knocking on your door, playing around town, I'm sure a lot of you were able to see that. It's really fun. I love seeing them around. They also have their first competition October 11th. They've been working real hard for that. If you drive by the high school, there's a good chance you'll hear them playing with their metronome going at all hours. Choir and McStee are also gearing up. Choir's first concert is their winter concert, which will be December 9th. So Little Ways Out, that will also include Mixalidians. Speaking of the Mixalidians, will have their first public performance at the tree lighting ceremony, but their first competition isn't until January 30th. We're gonna shift down again into activities. First off, we've got homecoming, obviously real big on everybody's schedules. That is going to be September 27th. The overall theme is Adventure Awaits, but each class has their sub-themes. Seniors have Road Trip. Juniors have By the Seaside. Sophomores have Hit the Slopes. And Welcome to the Jungle is our freshman sub-themes. So they are all putting a lot of effort in, in Student Council, beginning leadership. Everyone is welcome to come, this Saturday, actually, to our hall decorating. So each class's show's in a hall, and they're laying it out in all their gear for whatever their sub-theme is. That will then correlate into their homecoming float for our Homecoming Parade, which is on the 26th. It'll be starting at four. Not only will it have our Student Council floats, but it will also have floats with a bunch of different clubs, sports. Whoever from the high school is willing to have a float, they are totally able to participate. And then we will also be having a blood drive coming up on October 7th. So you're able to sign up. Haleyanna back there is our blood drive coordinator, just so you know. So she's been putting a lot of work into planning that. It is completely open to the public. Just sign up, come in, and they will love to have you there. It's a great opportunity to give back and help out those who are in need of blood. And then we also have our Suicide Awareness fundraiser. This is new this year. A few members from Student Council have chosen to take this on. They're planning a dinner night out with Maude. That is going to be October 16th, but September is Suicide Awareness Month. So they will be having the day after homecoming when we come back. So Monday, the 29th, will be the day where they give out rubber bracelets, as well as different items and flowers to students just to remind them to keep pushing through the hard times, especially as we go into that winter slump. We will also be having a little gratitude wall where students are able to show their appreciation for what's happening around them by just sticking a note on a tree and leaving it out for everybody to see. That's gonna be September 21st. That is Gratitude Day. We're gonna move down into athletics. Ball sports have ramped up. Each team has now begun league play. Football has had a great start. They won their first game against Roosevelt, and they also hosted our first home game of the season against Westland. Soccer's been doing great. Girls and boys had a great first game, winning their first opener, and have been working so hard ever since. Cross-country's been hard at work. They've had a few races already. And at their most recent one, girls placed first while boys placed second. They've also been experimenting with lots of new techniques that they can use in their later meets. Volleyball's been doing great. They had a sweep of McMinnville. And then Dance and Cheer are also working hard, now moving into their competition routines, while also still supporting the other athletics. In fact, we have the Arrows here with us tonight. So these three are captains, as well as our coach, Tricia Herndon. So that's going to be Morgan Wallace, Haleyanna Phelps, Linnea Geisler, and then me. I am a member. So the Short Arrows have been successful at State the past three years, bringing home a title. They are also competing locally and at the national level. We travel to Orlando each year. This is going to be our third year doing so, competing against teams from all over the United States, which has been a really amazing experience. We also perform at the football games, some of our home basketball games. And then we are going to do a small little performance for you guys. So I'm going to hop up and join them.
And Paige, before you take off, can I just say, especially since our first meeting, on behalf of our team, we just wanna say thank you for your time and commitment that you're gonna lean in, not only tonight. That was wonderful and informative, but also just for the year. I know how incredibly busy you are and your friends if you're not putting together blood drives. And you probably have practice after this, and you probably, right? Or ish, okay? And so we understand one more ask, but we are really appreciative. And I know I'm excited to see that school board float in the homecoming parade. So. That was a joke, Paige. So don't write us down for that. Board members, anything else for Paige that you have before the team comes up with her?
No, I would just say the same thing. We really appreciate you being here. It's a lot of work to jump in here and be a part of our meetings and bring us all of your updates, but we really love to hear them, and it helps us be involved as well and know where we can kind of participate. So thank you very much.
As you guys come up, can you just say hello in the microphone a little bit? And then maybe we'll just ask maybe what is something that you're most looking forward to on the Arrows' season this year? So just come on up, and then you'll be up. Paige, you can kind of join them, so they're maybe less nervous about that.
Can I count you in?
Hi, I'm Linnea, and something that I'm looking forward to is our Halloween Costume Competition.
Hi, I'm Morgan, and I really look forward to performing at all the football games.
Hi, I'm Haley, and I'm excited to go to Orlando for Nationals.
She stole mine, but I'm also really excited for Nationals. We're going to both Universal and East New York this year, which I'm really excited for.
That was outstanding. Hi.
That was it.
Former member, former captain of that team and code. Very proud.
So now is it the board's turn to go up?
Let's count us in. Ready? Five, six, seven.
Great job. Wait. Don't leave yet. I have an idea, Paige. I have an idea. This is so much better with when you're right there. The floor was vibrating. So you guys, it's so much better up close than at the football game. I think you need to bring it into every classroom. Adam, you okay with that? Do a short flow through every classroom like the Mixalidians. Okay, bye.
Thank you so much, you guys. Thank you to their coach, Tricia Herndon. Okay, moving right along. We're going to go to Dr. Downs with his superintendent update.
Uh, great. Can you keep the music playing? If we could play that music for my update. I genuinely am always impressed by what our students are involved in, what we're asking them to do, not just at the high school level, of course, but well beyond. And I'm excited. It's nice to see you. Thank you so much for volunteering to be on our board. Director Kaufman, it's nice to see you, as well as Director Muller and Hawkins. You are both welcome. You, Director Thornton and Chair Carson, thank you for being on there as well, but those three were just elected. And so we're excited for a great school year. It's my pleasure tonight to just welcome us back. Wanted to let you know where we've been since last spring, when we last connected. And I'm gonna start with just a huge thank you to our kids, our families, and our staff. It's been an incredible start to the school year, and that takes a lot of hard work. If you've parented before, you know that that shift from summer-ish, doesn't matter the age, to school, it's a transition. It's also a transition for us adults in there. A big shout out to our district team. I'm gonna shout out to you all and Casey and your team and every other member of the district office who helped to really plan hard in the summer to help ensure a great onboard for our staff. We had a great year, a great summer of hiring high-quality educators and staff members who have just jumped in and done an amazing job. But specifically, our kids just came back ready to roll. And so a big thank you to them. Wanted to share, building on last year's district theme that we had a shared vision question of how do we inspire a joyful community of learners? At my heart in that is that I want a place where there's kids and adults wanna be, where there's happy kids and happy adults. And to build on that this year, we have embraced a theme to, and we call the theme "To Be a Fan." And what that means at its core is to be an encourager. I think in a world where sometimes we get discouraged or have challengers or others, I think being encouragers of one another is really important. And for us, to be a fan, to me, is just building on our strategic design and our vision question. And we wanna be, I want us to be a fan of each other, of our kids, of our families, and to be like a real, true fan, not like a fair-weather fan. To be when it's, you know, the times get a little tougher, we can encourage and be a fan next to each other. And so that's why you see these jerseys, and you know, thank you, I know we were wearing these jerseys. Our whole staff are receiving these jerseys, and we're really excited. It's just a small token that is part of being a part of a team, and I'm just really appreciative of our team. So I wanna share just a couple of updates from last spring. One update is around the use of our safety vest rules. Thank you for your support last year and encouragement to increase the safety in our schools. We have fully implemented those with proper training and protocol that will be ongoing for our office teams and administrators. And so far, our feedback has been really great from parents, from visitors, and from our staff. There's always kinks that you're working through, but it's been really high quality for us. And so we've been appreciative of that important safety upgrade in our school systems, and thank you for your support. Secondly, I just wanna highlight the building on the positive school culture, especially at the high school. You know, this year, we went cellphone-free in our high school. We were already K-8, but now it was B for this year sophomores through seniors. And I just wanted to say thank you to our students and to our families and staff again for making that a success. You've heard about it. You've probably heard about it in your own homes if you have high school students as well. But we get excited, our team gets excited when we go to the high school and see kids playing cards at lunch and see kids engaging in activities. My whole goal is I wanted us to make new friends. I wanted new friendships and just to build on the positive culture and to hear the buzz, hear that buzz in the building at lunch and at passing times. And we have students that are just, they're self-proclaimed more dedicated, more focused, and dialed in, as they say, dialed in on their learning. And it's really cool. So we know that there's some adjustments, and we've just been, we've been very appreciative of them. Lastly, before I'll kick it over to the board for updates, I just wanna share good news for us on enrollment, where we are on track for where we thought. And Gary Bennett and his team have done a phenomenal job of, we don't rely on just maybe outside demographers, not picking on that, but that is not something you can rely on in today's world. You have to rely on our data. And Gary really did a deep dive. And we knew we would have a large, we had 421-ish seniors leaving, and we knew we were going to have a smaller kindergarten class starting, which is around 232. We knew that would be a gap, and we have closed that gap in the rest of the grades. We are up significantly in all the other grades. And we were pleasantly surprised with our kindergarten numbers, because as I told you last spring, this year would be, it is the lowest recorded in our county's history for kinderberch this year. So we knew that this year was going to be a little bit lower. But we are in much better shape than many of our colleagues because we kind of landed right where we needed to with enrollment. So we're appreciative of that. And we welcome new families in. So we've had what we considered that it's a 10-day drop period, which allows us to really call our enrollment numbers to make sure it's as accurate as it can be. And so it's a big deal. And so we are excited to keep monitoring that, and we'll keep reporting back. But thank you. I'm excited. It's gonna be a great year. It's nice to see you.
Thank you for that. We'll head into our board updates. We have updates from every director besides Director Muller tonight. So kick it off, Director Thornton.
Thank you very much. I'll just give it brief. I know there's a lot of things that we are excited about, or as we've been saying, being a fan of. I just wanted to highlight one thing that I particularly noticed. I'd spent years being a teacher, so I know the kind of prep work that it's involved in the beginning of the year, like the amount of papers and things that you gotta prep and get ready to go, or the few years I taught at Science Lab, trying to get all those things ready to go. I didn't realize the logistical, how big and complicated logistics are for like doing like music and band. Like, oh, my gosh. And I went to that band room before school started, and all the instruments are all out. And all of a sudden, like, oh, yeah, you got like 100 kids in a class, don't you? Yeah, it's like, so kind of a big shout out to some of those classes that we don't always think about, and how hard those beginning-of-the-year starts are. Like, you know, music is gotta be just an enormous lift at the beginning of the year. And I know they're not getting paid for all those days that they're in there for, but we appreciate it very much.
A couple of quick thank yous. First, as a parent of two elementary school students, I know how challenging the transition from summer to school can be. And, you know, there have been a number of nights over the last couple of weeks where as we've been approaching bedtime and it's meltdown city in our house, I think to myself, it's amazing that we have groups of teachers who have a full roomful of students who are similarly experiencing that transition and put so much work and so much care into helping students make that transition successfully and get launched onto a new school year. The second thing is I have been a literal fan around the many fields of Sherwood the last few weeks, and just kind of echoing all the hard work that the district puts in for all sorts of activities. You know, that includes every field here in Sherwood and coordinating every field and working with all the leagues to make sure that people can practice and have games. And I know that that's a lot of work, and it's appreciated for all the parents who get to just show up on a weekend and watch a soccer game. So many thanks to everybody involved in a successful start to the school year.
All right. Well, it's nice to be back. I always love the beginning of a school year because I think it's just the fun, the hustle, bustle, and excitement of it all. But first, I wanted to share how happy I am to see our no-cellphone plan working out. My oldest son, who's a junior, told me when the school year started, there's no chance they're keeping our cellphones away from us. This won't last. And I was like, interesting. I hope you have a great experience at school. And he has not lost his phone yet, but he told me last night that he felt really well-prepared for his math test today because it's so much easier to pay attention to class when you're not on your cellphone, which clearly, you know, is the case. But it's just interesting to see in only a couple of weeks how much that has impacted his ability to learn. And I would say, being his junior year, it's probably like the most important time for him to understand that. And since he can't text me from school because he doesn't have a phone at school, he made sure to send me a quick email after his test to let me know that he was pretty sure he got a four. So he, so, you know, it just made me smile to think that, you know, kids still know how to communicate with us when they really need to, but he's definitely seeing the benefits of not having his phone out at school, and that's been great. Also, having a junior kid made me realize I went to the first meeting for grad night planning because it takes two years to put on a party that lasts a few hours. And when I showed up with about six other parents, we realized that none of us were hoping to run it, and we didn't know why there was only six of us who showed up to the meeting at all. So we are going to have another meeting on Tuesday night, tomorrow night, at the Elks, because that's apparently where they do those meetings, at 7:00. And we are highly encouraging parents to come out and participate. Even if they don't wanna take on a big role, I took a little flak, but I did tell the people that showed up that I think going forward, I'm gonna offer like a buyout from adults that don't want to participate. So I sat at the home football game the other day trying to sell raffle tickets to people who were making great effort to not make eye contact with me. And I know they have a junior. And so I told them, I'm like, $1,000, and I want to ask you for a thing for the next two years. No time, no effort, no. But it's amazing.
That's genius.
It takes a lot, it takes a lot of effort. So really, I'm just making the board report because I'm hoping that some parents will come and join us tomorrow night. Six of us don't wanna put it on. So anyhow, see you tomorrow night.
So I have a new meeting to go to tomorrow night. I'll be at the Elks. Yeah, from one junior parent to another. No, I wanted to just expand on what Dr. Downs was referring to about the cellphone policy. We've lived and experienced it. My son had it taken away, and it was the best five days without it because I left it there over the holiday weekend. And so, you know, he's learning lessons the hard way, and I'm finding that parents are also giving their children the same lesson and leaving it at the school. I'm really happy about this policy for the benefits that I didn't really even think were coming my way. And one of those being, my junior came home and said, I had a really great day-to-day in physics. And I about fell over because I didn't know that those words were possible to come out of his mouth. And then he said, oh, and by the way, my lit comp teacher praised me on something this same day. And I said, is this how it can be? So I thought, this is amazing because he's now engaged. And it's just great. These are like the benefits of things that you wish and hoped for for years, and now you have an administration aboard and teachers enforcing something that we all have wanted for so long. And I just hope that we don't waver in any way because we're seeing the fruits of that labor at the middle school, coming up into the high school with those freshmen who don't know any different because they were doing it. And so they're fully engaged. They know how to deal frankly better than some of our seniors and juniors. So I'm a big fan of that. And that's it. That's all I got. I'll see you at the Elks. We're gonna move on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yep, falls there second.
Second.
For all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. Moving on to public comment, there is none tonight. And we're gonna scoot down to Board Superintendent Goals for '25-'26 with Dr. Downs.
So this summer, we had an opportunity as Marlene and I and our board had a great summer workshop where we were able to work with a facilitator, Mike Scott. And we really decided that we were working on two things. And I'm gonna just start by sharing the first one. We wanted to have a shared commitment as a team, a board and superintendent team around some goals for this year. And so these are the goals that we crafted together that you can see in front of you here. And the first one is just, I'll kind of summarize. It was actually strengthening student achievement and early literacy in math, and we're focused on effective instruction, aligned curriculum, and timely support from learners in our elementary schools. When we go on some learning walks a little bit later together, that's what we'll be focusing on. And then potentially, in some of our work sessions, that's what we'll be focusing on. We also, the second shared goal is around our effectiveness as a unified team by maintaining clear communication, shared expectations, consistent collaboration. And Chair Carson will share one more component to our conversation there. And then lastly, we want to prioritize the development of the student agency by expanding our high school and middle school learning environments to really make sure that they're the ones owning their learning. And we really talked a lot about supporting not just standards-based grading over the last couple of years, but also around just the bigger environments. How do we plan for the future and make sure our kids are getting their best opportunities and make sure that we're working hard together on that? So those are kind of the three goals that we talked about, and I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
Um, only that we have tried to take these board superintendent goals and tie them back to um, the ongoing thing of how do we inspire a joyful community of learners? And then kind of with this year's theme of be a fan, um, it it ties that all together of how do we, how do we do that? Um, to tie it into our working commitments, our board superintendent working commitment. So when we had our summer workshop this summer. With Mike Scott and Dr. Downs and and Dr. Marlene. Marlene Carroll, this is Carol, Marlene Carroll. Um, sorry, um. We came together as a group and we decided on what are our shared commitments that we want to focus on? What is the role of this body truly? What is the the real role of this body? Um, and we came up with um, our little pamphlet here, our twelve. Board superintendent superintendent shared commitments that we're gonna have in front of us at every single meeting. So we can kind of remind ourselves like why we're doing this and why we're here and why we need to work together. And the first and very most important is consider the impact of actions and decisions on kids and staff. That's just number one. But one of the things that we added um, this year. Um, that's new for us is we're gonna conduct annual self-assessments and evaluations. Um, and that's just so we can address progress towards shared uh, goals and alignment and adherence to shared commitments. Um, so those are new for us. We've all worked on them. We've seen them. Um, I think we're all very excited about that moving forward. Um, and I don't know if anyone has any comment on that that they want to share.
I'll just share briefly. I love that these are a lot more robust. I, the ones that we had before. Um, you know what? They really came out of a place of like we had nothing and so they were pieced together very quickly. Um, by doing like a quick search of kind of what other boards were doing and um, they were nice. But I don't know that we really like invested in them and I don't know if they really fit what we felt like was our role. So I like that we took the time to really look through these and talk about them and decide what we felt like was true and accurate for this board and then. Um, commit to them. So. These feel much more like what we should be doing.
Moving along, um. Brady Strutz is going to introduce our transportation awards.
That was a long walk. I probably could have just stayed at my uh, desk, but Casey's worth it. Hey, um, we have this phenomenal transportation team. I got some time uh, with them at the start of this school year. They are the first and last uh, people that many of our students see every day. Um, when they come to school and and head home and they're just a tremendous group. It's such a a positive. Uh, rich place to to visit and be a part of and we have a couple of folks to celebrate tonight. So here is Casey Jebbins, our director of transportation.
Good evening. So we as um, the transportation department have been a part of the Oregon Pupil Transportation Association in various levels for the last. Well, as long as I can remember. Um, when I first came to Sherwood, that was one of the things I was encouraged to do was to attend meetings and be a part of the. The the leadership within the OPTA group and one thing that OPTA does is. Works to um. Recognize excellence within the transportation industry across the state of Oregon. And in the past ten years, we have had seven individuals that had been awarded an award from the OPTA organization. Head driver trainer or trainer of the year, uh, mechanic of the year, director of the year. Those are all things they've won. And this past June, we had two more added to that list, taking for a total of nine. When I presented um, at the June meeting for Bruce, who was our retiree after fifty-three years. I knew that he had been, he he had been awarded the driver of the year award, but I couldn't say anything, so I had to hide it. Aaron knew and he's like, can I tell everybody? I says, no, nobody can know yet. Um, and we also had Mary Brockman. Um, as driver trainer of the year. Bruce did fifty-three years, yes. Bruce did fifty-three years as a bus driver. And one of the things that that OPTA does is they give the um, company that sponsors the award. They give them the nomination sheets and for Bruce, he had twenty-six nominations. From our staff to be driver of the year. And so they had a hard time kind of synthesizing down tho- those twenty-six pages. Uh, Mary, when she um, was nominated, had only been in our district for about four months. And in that short time, she made that kind of impact in a couple of drivers. That they saw that she was phenomenal in what she did. And so we are gonna be a fan. And I am so glad that I get to be a part of this transportation team and I'm a huge fan of them and. It's my pleasure to be able to be that advocate for them to you. And for you to be able to honor them and say thank you for all that they do. So for Bruce and Mary and all of the other drivers and office team, thank you.
Thank you, Casey. That's amazing. We love hearing. When we get awards out of the transportation department, I know that you'll come back again this year and tell us about all the fun. Uh, you know, competitions they have to do. And we do always do pretty well at those as well. So I love hearing about it and hopefully we'll get to bring those award winners in so we can personally thank them next time. Um, okay, so we're moving on to information and discussion. Uh, first read on some policy updates from the exec team.
Great. Well, thank you. Uh, tonight we are bringing forward the fall policies that um. You can, uh, we had, we put together, this was, we put out in the board docs, but you also have a a copy here. What I want to be clear with our team. Is uh, we really uh, value, this is the first read, as Chair Carson said, and that means that we have a month. To review and and get into the documents and ask questions if or get into policy, if there's something specific. Um, we stand ready to serve. Please don't hesitate. Um, you know, come, you know, ask, ask the question that you 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 would have. Um, but anyway, what we're gonna do tonight is just share with you, there's most of these, the majority of these are um, required. They are just um, either updates or um, required policies that we need to become in alignment with and we're in good timing on all of them. Uh, there are just a couple that were additional that wouldn't necessarily fall into the required, but for us, it may be some language that. Of an existing policy we already have and we're just kind of updating it. And so we'll kind of walk you through our exec team is going to just kind of pinball back and forth as we hit the the parts, uh, the policies that affect uh, them. Um, if we could kind of hold, if you have a question, let's try to let us pop through it first and then maybe come back. And uh, see if you have any questions um, that you may have tonight that we may have to come back with information for. Or if you just want to uh, you know, ask uh, during the next month. So. Um, let's get uh, let's get it uh, started here. So these are mandated by law and they're requiring board adoption. So we want to, uh, we work directly with OSBA. Um, and partner with them as do majority of Oregon school districts. So.
All right, so um. Policy AC is the non-discrimination and civil rights policy and really the update to this one is that there is a new law. Around um, certain requirements. One of them is the district has to have a named um, civil rights coordinator and that person has to go through a series of trainings. And so that is um, both the AC and then the AR is kind of um, how we're going to implement that one. So you'll see that. Um, the AR also includes just the um, discrimination complaint procedures. So when there is maybe uh, somebody with a complaint around discrimination around civil rights. Then that kind of follows that process and you'll see what that is. That is required as well. Um, hmm, next up is policy GBN JBA, sexual harassment and the updates, this is again required. Uh, the significant changes within this um, are to accept. Um, one section with the updated language and then um. Update the contact information, uh, which is removing the previous HR director and adding mine. Um, on that policy. Next up is GBN JBA. Again, this update is for. Um, contact information and uh, that uh, suggested dates. We already had within our current policy and so this one was up to date without uh, with the exception of the contact. Um, the next one is also mine, GBN dash JBA AR. Two and again, this is just updated. Um, language of the required policy and there was one um, one section that had. Um, word verbiage update that we updated and then again updating the contact information. Um, the educational records and records with students with disabilities management, that is just a slight update to the language around. Um, removing uh, the ability to share social security numbers and just slight update there. So you'll only see a couple. From an existing policy. Uh, graduation requirements is very similar. You're gonna see the addition of. It of adding the extended diploma back into notification requirements and the state removed that and now they're putting it back. And and then personal electronic devices.
So the update to JFC EB, I wanted to just be clear, um, as part of the executive order that came out. Um, all districts will need to have adopted a a new JFC EB policy by October thirty-first. We are well within, that will be after our second read and hopefully we've already a- adopted the the new policy. Uh, with full implementation by January first of twenty twenty-six. And like most districts around us, they, we did choose, we had chosen to do this pri- uh. Uh, prior in the spring and so we are already implementing, we'd already met with staff and students. And then this is just for maybe districts who um, haven't done that yet and want to wait until January. So the new JFC EB was put together by OSBA in consultation with superintendents and others. And the big change is it just matches what the executive order, which is basically saying, uh, you know, during the school day, it's off and away. That's the a a quick version. We did have to put in our um, kind of what our steps were for uh, compliance related to that. And one of the caveats is that students aren't missing class time for um, a phone situation. There's, that's not. That's not what we're doing. That's not what we were doing anyway, but that was actually put into the the executive order. Um, the other thing to note is we work closely with our attorney Jolly. And Jolly um, works with several dis- districts and one of the things that we um, wanted to uh, highlight is in the JFC EB, we already had an existing policy. And she recommended keeping a couple of things, even though OSBA didn't have it in there. And so we kept them in there and the two things she recommended keeping that weren't in there were. Students must not use personal electronic devices to take, disseminate, transfer, share or post uh, video images of of students. Um, without explicit explicit permission. And then the second is students are responsible for any personal electronic devices that they may bring to school. And the district's not responsible for lost that and so that's been on there for years and uh, most districts are keeping that, those those two portions in there. Um, so, thank you.
Um, the pregnant and parenting or and or parenting students, um, that just is a change that aligns to uh, the. Update to the title ten, nine policies, ten, nine. All right, uh, J uh, JHF F dash GBN, uh, reporting requirements for sus- suspected sexual conduct with students. There is content change on this one that I want to note for you guys. House bill forty-one sixty in twenty twenty-four. Changed the definition of a student. From a student who left or graduated the high school within ninety days to within one calendar year. And so they can come back and make a report now, um, a full calendar year. And then any thi- any other changes or just changes to contact?
Could I jump back to the lawyer change? So when we say students must not use personal electronic devices to take. Disseminate, transfer, share or post still or video images of any student. Or district employee without the explicit permission of the student or employee. Do we have a policy of what will happen if? Someone is out of compliance with that?
We have a behavior matrix currently that uh, outlines and guides uh, supporting students who are in this situation. And so the answer, yes, we do. It's 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 in our behavior matrix.
And and so then this was, sorry, I'm just getting up to speed on. So this was in our policy. This is just not legally, this is. A portion that's not legally required.
No, this is recommend, this is, this was in the previous policies and then it was not in the uh, current OSBA one, but not necessarily uh. There was conversation with maybe why wasn't it? And so. So our attorney, whoever she works with, legal, she recommends to just keep it in instead of deleting that.
So this is our legal advisor is asking us to keep it in. It's just not the. OSBA formal recommendation. Just wanted, just wanted to be. Be clear so that if you have questions on that. That's great.
Great, uh, JOA directory information. So for this one, uh, this is a. Directory info and student records and the State Board of Education made changes to these rules and uh, this policy is just updated to reflect the changes they made.
All right, and similar, um, how student, how families notify uh, the district around enrolling their student in a virtual public charter school is what. The denial for virtual public charter school student enrollment is all about. And so it's just updating that language to uh, current law.
So now these are the, just a couple that I mentioned that these were additional, maybe as already existing policies that are uh, we're updating. Um, or have recommended uh, based off from the executive team um, that we've worked together on.
Yep. Um, okay, so the advisory committees to the board, this is an update to public meetings law that happened over last year with. The Oregon Legislature as well as the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. And they made several changes and so we had this policy, but it's just an update with those changes included.
And the next one is just a board meeting agenda. This is just an update for our current practice. It actually just puts it into into writing, which we had the practice, we just didn't have it, which basically just says. Um, we have uh, two people want to put something on the agenda. They work with the board chair who works with our our team. And that's all that this one uh, says and cleaned up.
Uh, the next policy is district purchasing and this one will allow staff to engage in contracts. Right now the limit's a hundred thousand dollars. We'll change it to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That brings us in line with uh, Oregon procurement guidelines around where two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, anything above that, we need to go through a very formal process. It's a less formal process up to that number. And practically speaking. In the modern world, if you have a boiler that goes out, boilers cost in excess of a hundred thousand dollars and while we don't want to wait until we can bring the board together to approve that contract, we need to go and issue a contract. That one could technically be an emergency, but things of that nature. It gives us flexibility, we'll manage the money just as carefully, but it just gives us a little more. Ability to move quickly. Or move more fluidly.
Okay, the next one, the next one is the admission of exchange students and this is really an addition of a small phrase. That is meaningful and that is an inter-district transfer requirement. So if a. Student is on an inter-district transfer and they have an exchange student with them that they are also allowed to come and be in Sherwood and go with that inter-district transfer. So that allows them to come in with them. Uh, and that was a update that we wanted to make to honor those families and the convenience of that. That's our recommendation there. And then uh, the final one. Is around immunization, school sports participation, concussion and other brain injuries. And this is uh, following the adoption of HB three zero zero seven. And it outlines the steps that must be taken when um, a student has a concussion or brain injury. And so that's now included in the board policy. So this is an update. And that's all.
Yeah, so uh, thank you, by the way. Thanks to the team. There's a lot, that was a lot. Kind of comes, sometimes those come at us with those requirements and we just want to make sure we bring them, we we hold them until the fall and and kind of bring them together. It's a little bit of a larger group. So. Uh, any questions or uh, comments that you have?
Just to uh, clarify for anyone watching at home or and kind of also for my clarity as well. So that first group, those are required either by. State changes to state and federal law or advice of our legal counsel, all of those. We we have to make those changes. And then the second group are changes that we're deciding to make. In to to get our policies and procedures in line with where we want to be.
Sort of. So the second group can be a policy also that we've already had in existence. And because a rule or a law or statute has changed in some way, if we keep the policy as is. Then we will not be in compliance with that new rule. So let's take the concussion one, for example. That was um, legislation that happened in twenty twenty-five, I believe, this summer. And so we uh, don't have that included in our policy because that didn't exist when we adopted the policy. So it's optional. But um, it like for OSBA, but we do want to update those policies just so that we're current.
We don't have, so th- those are things. But we don't have, so th- those are things where we, yeah, maybe being recommended by someone, but we don't necessarily have to do it, whereas the changes in the first set. We, we have to do to be in legal compliance.
Yes, but I wanna build on that because, so technically if you didn't have the policy, so like some of those were strongly recommended and we already have those adopted, right? Most of those were actually already, you know, they're already in, in our books. They're just adding in like inter-district transfer for the foreign exchange student because we probably have that situation recently, right? So you want to be in compliance with that. So for us, because we already have that policy, um, it, it does meet, you do need to move it into that or you, or you move to remove the policy and then rethink that. And so um, we would bring that to you as well. We would say, let's bring this forward for deletion because it's not relevant anymore or whatever. Um, and so what we brought forth is, is those recommend, recommendations that actually allow us to be in compliance to make that policy viable. We do work carefully with um, our attorney on this as well, um, to make sure that um, they stay, they help us stay on, on these. And so we um, work carefully as a group to make sure that, of, of that. Does that help a little?
Yeah. Thank you for that. Mostly just wanted to clarify. And if, you know, if people are looking through the changes and wondering like, oh, why didn't we talk about this or talk about that? Yeah, some of these things are required. And so we have to go through the process.
Can I add one thing to that? I, I think too, there was a lot of confusion last spring about um, who does what and who writes board policy. Um, and I think if you were to get online and take a look at any of these, you'd see why we typically don't write board policy. Um, I certainly don't know how to write this policy or don't have the expertise to do it correctly. Um, and so this is what it's supposed to look like, that you guys bring forward board policy to us, that we review it, that we really ingest it and understand it, that we ask questions. We have a month to do that. Um, because if we truly do want to change it in any way, it often involves getting back in touch with OSBA or getting back in touch with lawyers to make sure that whatever we produce is still compliant. That's why when we wait a whole month and then open our board policy at the second read and say, wait, I never read this and now I've got questions or I had no idea this was in here, it's problematic because we're at a place where we need to move forward. Um, so that is the understanding that we really look at them now, that we take a month to look them over, that we reach back out if we have questions. And that if we do want to modify them, there is the space to do that. But I think in the five years I've been here, we've modified a policy one time and it was by, like, out of our desire to modify it. And it was only by a few words. And even at that, it was pretty complicated to work through that process. And so um, it's not as easy as us just like walking in the door and creating board policy. Um, unless it was something we like truly, truly desired to come together to do. I know you guys can support us, but it's pretty tricky. Um, so that, I just wanted to clarify that too. These aren't coming from our, our dreams.
No, I think, I, I, I do think that's a really important point. But like there are thing, you know, just flipping through here, there are words that I might change if it were completely up to me. But the thing we have to keep in mind is like, okay, then we're potentially exposing the district to legal liability if we're, if we're changing language and being, becoming out, out of compliance with what's being expected in other places. And maybe there will be times when we wanna talk about doing that. But that's, that's good background to have.
I think there's actually more instances of board members not understanding their role in reviewing policy within the month timeframe and then having their hands slapped at the second read, thinking that change is suitable at that time. And so um, I think that exactly what Abby said, um, it's a time to reinforce our law, our, our policies with new laws that have been passed and to strengthen and so that we don't leave the district liable for anything. Um, but that doesn't mean that you can't um, ask questions or um, you know, come up with a change of thought. Um, but there, it, it is a daunting task to um, change policy that's already recommended. So with that said, please, everybody take some time and ask questions way in advance of our next meeting if you have them. Thanks.
And, and, and we did, uh, we appreciate that and we are very available and want to support you whether you reach out via uh, phone, email, whatever, let us know. Just, uh, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's it, folks. Um, our next meeting of the board will be held on October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five. This meeting is adjourned.